And we are live on YouTube.
They can hear me. Sorry about that. Okay, May 15th, the special meeting. I call the meeting to order. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos. Councilmember Branning.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kick.
Here.
Mayor Marshawn.
Here. Okay, this is the special meeting item. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council on this special meeting on the item, which is regarding the fiscal budget. See, do we have anybody who should speak?
I was just giving them a second. No public comments been received.
Okay, no need to go through the the whole spiel there. Okay, with that, we have the item 3.1 is the proposed fiscal year 2023-2025 Operating and Capital Improvement Plan Budget.
Honorable Mayor Marshawn and members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Mardasova. The purpose of today's workshop is to review the city's draft by annual budget. The operating portion will be presented by our administrative services director, Tina Olson, and the capital portion will be presented by our city engineer, Bob Vin. I wanted to take a moment and acknowledge the work of city staff that have produced these comprehensive documents. They're attached to the agenda, but the voluminous nature of this doc of these documents is really impressive. We have small but mighty teams that led these efforts here in the city. The finance team led by Tina Olson and the engineering team led by Bob Vin worked very closely with every single city department to produce these comprehensive documents. Your budget is balanced and we're also taking care of the essential infrastructure, putting aside money on an annual basis as an example to repair and in some cases replace sidewalks in the city as well as to take care of our trees. We're also proposing additional comprehensive capital reserve policies. Today's workshop is informational. The budget is going to be before you for formal approval next month. We're also going to be providing opportunities for the public to be informed and educated on the budget, not only giving them access to these comprehensive documents, but also holding a town hall meeting in June and producing a summary of the budget in English and Spanish, as well as producing a video on the budget. All of this is going to happen in the next few weeks. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Olson for the presentation. Thank you.
And you know it's going to be an exciting video. Good evening. I should have more enthusiasm. So, good evening. My name is Tina Olson. I'm your administrative services director. As Mariana, city manager said, I'll be presenting the proposed fiscal year 23, 24, and 24, 25 operating budget. Bob Ben behind me will come up and he will present the fiscal year 23 to 28 Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP. And I did just want to know that Mariana, I just wanted to specifically acknowledge some of the finance staff. It is a it is a huge undertaking to get a budget done by this point in time. So the first person I wanted to acknowledge who couldn't make it this evening is Eric Peterson. He's our finance manager. He's at his daughter's graduation at a state. But patinning for him is David Doyle, who's sitting here to my left. He's one of our accounting supervisors. And then we have Benji Lynn and Anne Fertado, also accounting supervisors who worked on the budget. And then finally, Lori Ong, my assistant, and Dylan Christensen and Sabrina Kwan, who are junior accountants. So those are our budget staff who also do other tasks. Uh oh, uh oh. It's not moving. There we go. So this is our agenda. We're going to briefly review this, the city's five-year strategic plan, followed by review of all the city funds. And then we're going to dive into the details of the general fund. And then and then we're going to talk about the reserve policy that the city manager mentioned. And then, as I said earlier, Bob Ben will present the capital improvement plan. Now, I don't know. Here we go. So this is tragic plan. So as you know, we presented the five-year strategic plan to council on March 6. And this is just a quick recap of what that that strategic plan, there are five pillars. A safe community that thrives, an economy that prospers, environmental stewardship, inclusive and inviting places and places, and a city that works. And under each of these pillars are goals and objectives assigned to departments for implementation. I don't know how. There we go. It just seems to have a lag time. I'm sorry for that. So this slide provides an infographic that shows the relationship between the five pillars, the underlying basis for the pillars, such as the general plan and organizational community values, and then how that feeds into the operating budget and capital budget that's with you before you this evening. Don't know why this isn't going. Yeah, that wasn't working either. Sorry, it was working earlier this evening, so I my apologies. So this is the all funds overview. So the total 23, 24 budget for the city of Livermore is $319.8 million. That's an $82.7 million increase from fiscal year 22, 23. And 79% of that increase is really related to the capital budget. And then most of that capital budget increase is related to capital projects that are in the current fiscal year that we're carrying forward to the next fiscal year. A good example is, of course, the L Street Garage project. The general fund is $12.5 million of that increase, and then 4.5 million is related to other funds. This evening, we're going to focus on the general fund and the capital budget. There, that did work this time. So the general fund, as as the city manager said, it's balanced, of course, it has to be balanced. So and I'm going to review the revenues and expenditures in future slides, but I did want to just point out in this slide that we are proposing to use $6.4 million in 23, 24, and $13.3 million in 24, 25, and capital reserves to fund capital projects. And some of those you'll see in the capital projects line. But there's also some in the net transfers, since we're transferring those funds to two funds, the stormwater fund and the facility maintenance fund, and that's where the capital projects are budgeted. It's working. Yay. So revenues. So overall, we anticipate general fund revenues to increase by 7% in fiscal year 23, 24 to $143.1 million and 4% in 24, 25 to $147 million. Property taxes is our largest general fund revenue source, followed by sales tax. Together, they comprise $87 million in general fund revenues, or 62% of the city's general fund revenues. Property taxes are expected to increase by $3.2 million in 23, 24, and sales tax by $1.8 million. That is informed by current collections, as well as advice that we get from our sales tax and property tax advisor, HDL. So besides property tax and sales tax, the next big category we're projecting increases is investment earnings, and that's by $1.9 million or a 48% increase. That's a combination of rising interest rates and our ability to to as investments are maturing, to put them into higher earning investments. But also, we have a professional investment advisor that we started a contract with this year that's more actively managing the city's investments. We're also expecting to receive increased business license revenues from the two labs, Sandia Labs and Lawrence Livermore Lab, and that's based on a more accurate assessment of their business tax liability. And general fund expenditures. Overall, general fund operating expenditures are increasing by $12.5 million in 23, 24 to $131.4 million, and $5.3 million in 24, 25 to $136.7 million. That's excluding those allocations to the CIP and the transfers and and reserves. That's just looking at our pure operating budget. And we're going to review expenditures on subsequent slide. There we go. So the largest category for the city is wages and benefits. That is the largest category for any city. I think it's interesting, our category is $63.5 million or 50% of the budget. I'm accustomed to that being closer to 70 to 75% of the budget. So we do rely quite a bit on private contractors to deliver services for the city. And service and supplies are number two, and they're $57.8 million or 39% of the budget. So what changed in the first in the current fiscal years? Well, salaries and benefits increased by $9.9 million. But that increase in $9.9 million reflects the fact that we have a projected number for fiscal year 22, 23 that includes $6 million in attrition savings from vacancies. When you exclude that, it's a $3.9 million increase. And that increases a combination of COLAs, any sort of reclassifications we've done during the year. And then we're also adding six new positions to the budget. And the next big category that's increasing is service and supplies, a net increase of $3 million. It's a combination you see over to the left. We have insurance at $700 and almost $38,000. That is an increase in insurance premiums. We're experiencing that in the city in LPFD, and it's essentially happening across the industry, so it's not unique to the city of Livermore. LPFD, the Livermore Pleasant and Fire Department, I should say, is going up by 1.1 million. Some of that, as I said earlier, is insurance. We also have significant increase in equipment. Then they have also COLAs for themselves and health benefit increases. And I wanted to note that one of the pieces of equipment that's going to cost $500,000 is a replacement fire station alerting system. And we're proposing to fund that with a five-year interfund loan. It would be at the you got the LAF rate, it's like a money market rate, which is around, what's at one point?
It's around 2%.
Around 2% right now. And that's instead of getting, and we were looking at getting equipment financing, which is a higher interest rate to go that path. The city's contractual services are increasing by 1.2 million. 480,000 of that is for landscape and tree maintenance. And then another 400,000 is for new electric vehicle charging stations for city vehicles. So that's really what's comprising most of that increase. Travel and training is increasing by 180,000. Largest is for emergency management training and laserfish training for all city staff. And there's also a significant increase for the police department, and that's required police officer training. And then lastly, and the next big increase is workers' compensation, and that's the funding for workers' compensation. It's not that we're expecting additional claims, but we drew quite a bit onto workers' comp reserves in the current year, and we need to increase the allocation to actually fund those expenses for next year. And then new positions. Like I said, we have seven new positions in the 23, 24 budget, and then in 24, 25, there's six, so 13 in total. We identified those positions as part of the development of the five-year strategic plan back in the fall, and department staff put their wish list up through to the department head, who then prioritize it. We had about 50 positions in total that were proposed, and then the city manager selected from the highest priority based on the citywide priorities and then available funding levels. We just have a few examples of of some of those higher priority positions. We've got police officers, two police officer positions. We've got a neighborhood preservation officer, and that's to increase response to such areas as graffiti and abandoned vehicles and trash. Associate civil engineer position will manage the sidewalk repair program. And then a supervising librarian is oversee the library's youth services program. So the general fund forecast, you know, you saw this back in March when we presented the five-year strategic plan. It's been updated based on the the new numbers. We include in here projected revenues from new development, like the downtown development that's underway. But really, a big portion of those increased revenues is from the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan Development that's expected over the next five years. There's a total of 46.5 new positions in there. 33.5 would be in the last three years of the five-year forecast. And as you can see, we expect revenues and expenditures to match through 24, 25, and then we're going to have a bit of a surplus. I did note down there that there it looks like a dip, but really what it is, is, as I said earlier, we're utilizing capital reserves to help pay for capital projects in fiscal year 23, 24, and 24, 25. And that's a revenue and an expense, and then we're not expecting in the five, we're not planning in the five-year plan to continue that, although it could happen, but it's just not in the five-year plan. So that's why it dips. General fund reserves, we have funding at the required 30% level for the reserves. And we're estimating by the end of the two-year cycle, there'd be about $1.4 million in unassigned fund balance available. But of course, as we close the budget each year, we'll have an actual unassigned fund balance, and then we will come back to council in the fall with a year-end report that identifies what the actual is, and then the extent to which we're going to recommend allocations to the two capital reserves that I'm going to discuss in just a moment. So capital reserve policy. There are two capital reserves, the existing asset maintenance and repair reserve fund, and then a new and replacement asset reserve fund. We have a proposed policy that's going to go along with the budget in June for adoption. And the first one is really laying out the priority for the use of funds with the facility renovations taking the first priority, really reflecting the fact that there's been a significant city investment in the facilities, and that's something we want to protect. The next category priority is wall and fences, and that second priority is really reflecting the risk of serious injury if a if a wall fails. And sidewalks are third. They also can cause injury, though probably less likely to be as severe as if a wall fell on somebody. Stormwater is fourth, and that really reflects that 10% or $10 million of the stormwater master plan were considered high priority projects, and the 23, 24, and 24, 25 CIP includes almost $20 million for stormwater projects. So it felt like that could fall behind the other three categories. And then city-owned parks and tree maintenance are fifth and sixth, reflecting the fact that we are fully funding maintenance in the operating budget for those two asset categories. And then the new and replacement asset reserve fund, that establishes eligible uses for the those funds. And so it's really bigger projects, new and expanded public facilities and infrastructure, major renovations of a facility, so not the minor, more reserved renovations that would be under the existing asset maintenance or replacement facilities. If it gets to a point where we now have to actually replace a facility, it would fall under this category. And then for the funding plan, we're proposing that as we close out the budget every year, that we allocate surpluses to these two, and we would come back to council, like I said earlier, in the fall with those recommendations. And then annual budget allocations will really depend on the budget and available funding and any other competing priorities that we'd be looking at. And now it's capital improvement plan. And I'm going to keep, I'm going to keep driving the presentation, and Bob is going to present from over there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Bob Vin, your city engineer. I'm Bob Vin, your city engineer. And I'm pleased to present the draft 2023 to 2028 five-year capital improvement plan. This plan includes 214 projects that were considered, 146 of those are recommended with a budget in the five years. 84 of those are brand-new projects. The remainder are carried over from the current CIP as work continues. There were 68 projects that are not recommended for funding because we didn't have either staff resources or available funds to do it, but those are still high priority needs that we're having to defer. The this plan includes $213 million in appropriations over the next two fiscal years, and an additional 102 million in appropriations to projects that will continue beyond the first two years into years three, four, and five. Next slide, please. So here's a breakdown of the funding by the category. And the dark blue is the proposed appropriation amount for the first two years of the program. And the light lighter color is the next three years. So you can see, we're still investing heavily in the downtown, and that was mentioned, a goodly portion of that's for the Livermore Village Parking Garage. We also have a lot of street maintenance going on with nearly $46 million in the plan. Storm drain was mentioned before. We are doing a lot of storm drain projects, mostly to comply with state mandates. At the end, you see two really large graphs. The the first one's transportation. And that's generally three big projects, the I-580-Vasco interchange, the Dublin Boulevard-North Canyons Connector, and the Vasco Road widening from Garaventa to Dalton take up a lot of that budget. And then the wastewater category, we're doing a lot of process improvements out at the water reclamation plant to comply with regulations. Next slide, please. So just to give you a few highlights of the types of projects that are proposed. We, at the airport, will be doing north side taxiway improvements and geometry recommendations we're going to implement for safety. Downtown, I mentioned the garage. We're also working on Flagpole Plaza upgrades and additional landscape upgrades in the downtown. Parks and beautifications, we have a project for Springtown Open Space Phase One that we recently presented to the Springtown community. We've been working with LARPD on that project. Next slide, please. Public buildings, we have a lot of maintenance going on. We're currently working on the HVAC for City Hall and the Police Building, and that's going to expand to a second phase to do the Civic Center Library and the Maintenance Building. We're also planning on expanding the Fleet Shop building itself to better work on some of the larger vehicles that the city owns. In the category of public safety, we have a major modernization plan for Fire Station Six and some renovations to the Police Building that will help with some dated locker room bathrooms, kitchen and office areas. Trail and bikes, we have a number of actual pedestrian crossing improvements, but what's shown here is a project that we have to repair some of the asphalt on the multi-use trails. Several of them in various locations of the city. Next slide, please. Storm drain, in addition to the trash capture, we do our annual storm damage repairs where we'll clean out the creeks, and that helps avoid flooding. We've had a lot of flooding this year in various spots, so this is an important task. I mentioned workout at the wastewater plant already, and the final project to highlight is improvements to the Airway Boulevard Water Pump Station, which is out near 580 and Airway Boulevard. Next slide. In traffic control, I mentioned the crosswalk projects. We're also proposing to bring back neighborhood traffic calming. We haven't funded that in over a decade, and we still get a lot of concerned people calling about speeding in their neighborhood and so on. Mentioned street maintenance already, and I mentioned transportation already. So next slide, please. And that concludes my presentation, and Tina and I and staff are available for questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from from the council? We've already taken public comment, right? So we're good. All right.
A couple.
Yes, Vice Mayor Kick.
I just wanted to highlight, because it wasn't highlighted in the highlights, but I think it's super cool, is the teen space in the library, just the fact that teens want to be loud, and then they don't want to be shushed, and I think that's great, that won't be providing them that space. And then I had some questions. So can you help explain in the capital budget, we've got all the way up to 2843. But when we're looking at funding sources and budgeting expenditures, 2028 to 2043, we're making a long plan for what we guess is going to happen in 20 years, but really what we're talking about today is really just 2023 to 2025. Okay.
Not all the projects in that timeframe have funding allocations, but a good majority of them do. And all the projects that are intended to start in the next two years, well, we're asking for a funding allocation. The projects that are listed in the years 2028 to 2043, I would say that's not a complete, all-inclusive list of every city need during that timeframe, but those are projects that were considered for funding in the the current five-year plan and and didn't make the cut for a number of reasons. So they're shown, we showed the budget because we developed it, we just put it in later years for future consideration.
I just want to make that clear, that the 2843 numbers we're seeing, they're there for a reason, but they're, everything's flexible. Okay, and then let's see. What else was I going to ask you? Okay, so these budget expenditures, generally, our overall goal is to always make sure that whatever we're planning to spend is in alignment with all of our planning documents. However, are are we making sure that we're not only budgeting for the literal materials and cost of employees, but any studies ahead of time to make sure that we can do the work? I'm specific specifically talking about our act of transportation plan and slurry seals should be a really cheap way to add bike lanes, because it's just paint, right? But no, because we can't just put lines wherever we want, we have to do a traffic study before we do that. So how are we allocating? We're planning for a buffer budget to make sure that we can deal with a specific example like that.
So, great question. We do have an ATP, as you mentioned, that identifies a prioritized list of projects. And so some of the projects, when we do the slurry seals, we can just restripe. It's relatively straightforward. Others are much more complicated, like East Avenue. You have to contemplate a variety of trade-offs when you're thinking about that. And so we have a handful of areas, L Street, Marietta, that require a special study, because in some cases, they may require us to remove a lane or to remove parking. And as we've seen with East Avenue, it's a relatively staff-intensive process to go through that study, that community outreach. So we are trying to hit those projects that were identified in the first five years in the ATP and prioritize those. But we don't always necessarily have all of the staff resources to complete all of those studies before a slurry seal might be needed. And it is important to get the slurry seal done, because keeping that street maintenance level up helps reduce the costs over time.
So we're not going to have potholes be our traffic calming plan? No? Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure that we're yes, slurry seal is a cheap way, but sometimes sometimes there's more involved.
And we we are planning for all the streets that I just mentioned and others to do those special studies. And so we will do those over time. As we finish East Avenue, we will then look in the next couple of years to go on to some of these others.
Fantastic. Otherwise, everything looks very nice and easy to understand, so I appreciate the work that staff has done.
Thank you.
Okay, we closed the public comment period because that was at the beginning, but if you have, if you have a quick comment, please.
Sorry, I went to the wrong place. I I went to the wrong place.
Went back to the triple-wide trailer.
So, yeah, so no, I went to the library. I thought it was there. So Bob, you talk about the recently presented Springtown Phase One Park. Were you at the meeting there? Oh, I don't know if you can tell me if you were or not. I was there, and you said you were there, the manager was there. And I was concerned about how this is all being presented and communicated. There's a lot of different moving parts. And I'll give you, for instance, I've been up 20 hours taking dry brush from what was a fire hazard. I've got 11 bags of of dry brush that were up at a part of the old golf course. And I'm not sure whose responsibility it is, for one thing. Old golf course, and I'm not sure whose responsibility it is, for one thing, to be cleaning that up. I'm not sure who's renting the facilities now, or if they're running it through. The city or through the HOA, we're getting really almost. Mixed communication where nothing, we're not getting definite answers from any organization. It's my understanding that five hundred and five people own that six acres, so. My main concern is to communicate well before any other. Things go on about that, who's responsible for what and where the boundaries are? Because it takes up a lot of time. To try to understand what's going on, and I know our city manager was up at the meeting, I taped the meeting. And I asked her, you know. About certain things, and I don't think that there really was a presentation, I think it was more you were collecting comments, am I right or wrong on that? I'm right on that? Any help? I just really am concerned about, and I would love any input, any factual information. To be sent to C L cops K O P S at AOL dot com as it unfolds from that area, because. All I really want to know is where my responsibilities lies and what we're doing going forward. And if everyone who's a stakeholder has truly been considered, I know you guys have a lot on your plate, and I really appreciate that. You know, we're dealing fair with everybody in that area, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Cops. Councilor Carling.
Yeah, so I just want to make an observation as much as anything that. Fifteen ish years ago, you know, this city was in a pretty bad financial shape and. I mean, there. Were some hard decisions made. By the by the for the council at that time, as well as the city staff to. To balance the budget and really had to make some severe cuts of. You know, on the order of a hundred employees, that kind of thing, and it was it was really a tough time, but I. I guess what I want to do is to acknowledge. The the efforts and the dedication for the current staff as well as the. City Council over these intervening years is to keeping. The budget balanced yet still providing the kind of resources that we want. To the community, and I see that again in this budget, and so I congratulate Tina and her team and. And Bob and what he's looking at in terms of. How to keep improving the city resources, keeping us fiscally responsible for the taxpayers and so on, and. I think we're looking at a group of people out here in the audience that have been very much involved in all of that, and so I just want to acknowledge. What you all done over the last year or so, but going back even farther than that to keeping the city. In a very, very positive way, we. I mean, we look at the state and some of the larger cities around us. Where they're going to run into a big fiscal deficits and yet. We, this city of Livermore, has done a very, very remarkable job, in my opinion, and in keeping us in the black and not. Falling into the red, so again, I just want to acknowledge that for. The people that may be watching this program, but also to congratulate the people here. At this meeting tonight, so thanks very much for your dedication and your. And your. Careful managing of taxpayer money, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Carling, Councilor Brining, comments? Questions?
I don't have too many comments, just a couple of quick ones, so first of all, I also want to say thank you very much for the work for not just this year, but past years, we're really. I must say, in pretty good shape. It's impressive to see that we're, you know, coming out of. A lot of challenging times and actually investing more in our capital improvements now than we have been and our ability now to really. You know, shore up, beautify the city and make it a, you know. Just a nicer community for everyone involved. I do want to kind of follow up on what Vice Mayor Kick said and getting even more niche. Seeing along the way if we can't have resources available, so. You know, as she said, when we're doing slurry seals, but also it's come up a couple of times when PG and E or other public works are happening. When we then, you know, repave, seeing if maybe we can get some of the ATP projects put in at that time. I know coordinating with P G E is its own set of issues, but. Where possible, I think that would be very nice. Because it's money, I'll echo what I say every time money comes up, which is that we're. Going to need more resources, it may well be general fund, I'm not sure if it's grant funding or where we find it, but for human services, the need continues to grow. And the money continues to shrink, and so. Particularly on the service side, that's the side that's really hard to get grant funding for, and so the city needs to look at. Where small amounts of dollars can really make a big safety improvement and a big impact in people's lives. I believe personally that human service investments is a part of our public safety plan. I am glad to hear that we're looking at bringing some positions in-house versus contracting, I think in the long run, that becomes a money saver for us. I know it's a little bit of a growing pain at first, but. It's really nice to see that shift happening. And again, I just really want to thank everyone who is involved in this and putting, you know, together a city, a city that works, as it says in our five year plan, you're doing a great job. This is quite the document, and I'm very impressed, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Brantos, questions, comments?
I'd like to. Thank you for the report, I stepped on it, but it didn't kind of. Go into my brain.
Osmosis didn't work.
Three numbers, I haven't seen a lot of numbers lately, but I noticed you have seventy goals. You know, I'm lucky if I get three or four of my goals done, but. You know, we're counting on you. You know, Marianna, people are hiring good staff. So, you know, maybe I should go back my kindergarten years and give you a star every time you hit a goal. And I started my classroom, I really worked with the kids. And I appreciate the work and project, but I do have a. We will answer your question sooner or later, and. You know, since I'm representing Springtown, some things are going to get done in Springtown. And I've asked Marianna and staff that anything, something. That even might be a little bit, we're going to get something done there, and I'm begging on the community to help. In that area too, and it's not going to just be us, we all have to chip in and do something to help the area out. And I did my part at Community Service Day. Part of it. And the other thing is. On timelines, when things are going to get done, I'm not sure. Are there time like, okay, for the Eden project, when will that get done? If it doesn't get done on time, do we get? You know. Do we have to pay out more, or? How's that going to work? Does anyone know the timeline for the Eden project?
When the litigation is done, when the litigation is done.
Well.
I'll leave that to the city attorney, sorry.
So right now, there is a scheduled performance in the documents that between the city and Eden Housing, as far as when the performance. Litigation has concluded and is making its way back to the Court of Appeals, I'm sorry, from the Supreme Court to the Court of Appeals, back to the trial court. At that time, even will be pursuing additional funding opportunities and has another tax credit financing needs to pursue. I don't know off the top of my head when the they intend to break ground, but it's not this year, was it twenty four, twenty five?
So Eden expects to go out for tax credit financing next year, and they have not indicated to the city that they need additional funding from us at this time, they expect to get that money through the tax credit process.
Correct. Correct. So they'll go on twenty four, so chances are they either twenty, probably twenty five. I don't know off the top of my head when they're, we're looking at, we have an internal meeting.
When they would start construction?
Yeah.
It would be guestimate would be the end of twenty twenty four, early twenty twenty five.
You know, one more. I noticed that Legacy is starting to rent out their places. I guess what, thirty one hundred, starting to five thousand one parking slot per person, so. At least that's going, I'm not sure. How much, how many of our people will be all living in those houses, you know? Thirty five thousand bucks starting for for rent. And one car can park in there unless you pay a hundred dollars more for one more. And they look pretty, I'd like to say, I saw the conditions and everything, the virtual tours, they look nice. The ones I really liked though are the Avance. Unis, those are nice.
Yeah, the monstery is a beautiful project, so a couple of things all over the, I'm going to be all over the map here, so so bear with me, please. So just a quick comment about the the what's happening in in Springtown, and of course, we there is the the HOA which. That is supposed to. That's supposed to answer to the community residents, and we have no control over that, that's operated by a board. Right, but that's operated by a board that's elected by the residents, and the city has no control over the HOA. One of the things that greatly impressed me about the the workshop that was out at the at the Springtown. And it goes back to the sort of the biblical thing about rumors, and you take a bag of feathers and you cast them from the top of the hill and you have to pick them all back up again. There has been a piece of misinformation that was put out probably. Close to fifteen years ago, which continues to come up over and over again, and it it it. Causes this gridlock because the community feels that. That they have been treated unfairly, and there's this sense that. There's this adversarial relationship because of this misinformation that came out, and. It comes right down to, it was a copy of the Springtowner mag, Springtowner newsletter. And in the newsletter, it said that the city was looking to. Take out the golf course, sell the land and put in. Low income, high density affordable housing, and someone at the workshop. Stated that at this last workshop and that it is absolutely untrue. Absolutely untrue, what the one of the proposals was, was to sell part of the golf course lands. And put in market rate housing. Market rate housing. Now. In the city of Livermore, we have a program called inclusionary housing, so in every single development. There is. Fifteen percent affordable housing included, hence inclusionary in the in the development. So. What? Two people did was to say, oh, well, this, because there's affordable housing in this, then it's. All affordable housing, and that was absolutely untrue, but we haven't been able to get past that. In close to fifteen years, we haven't been able to get past that one piece of misinformation that was given to the entire community. But half the land is going to be sold for market rate housing, and that was going to be set up a trust fund to support a new library, a community center. And the open space. But there's this adversarial relationship that we've had. For years, because as much as we've tried to. Communicate with the public. There's this this adversarial feeling that somebody was trying to dump low income housing on Springtown, and that is absolutely untrue. I was there, so I remember all of this. So, with that, we're going to get, we're going to get through this, I certainly appreciate Councilor Brantos representing. The North Livermore, he's not the first, we've had several others that were members of the council from Springtown and from North Livermore, so. We're continuing in that process to keep North Livermore in the in the conversation. So. Moving along just a little bit here, we got an email from Ms. Ziomac regarding East Avenue and the funds allocated. What was proposed to occur this year, they were asking about the two and a half million budgeted for twenty four, twenty six. So, just just a quick recap on that, is that a placeholder or is that committed funding? Have the the projects actually been defined, or is that going to continue to evolve as the process goes along? As we continue to learn more about the traffic patterns and get more public input.
Sure, so the East Avenue study that we started a few years ago was funded out of our operating budget. When we moved into the phase two part, the tactical East Avenue that was deployed recently. That was programmed in the existing capital improvement budget, so a portion of the the phase two studies. Going to extend into next year, so a small portion of that budget that you're talking about will go to the the current. Effort, the remainder, which is most of it, is a placeholder for whatever project the council decides to put out on East Avenue.
Okay, and that's based upon the community input that we get.
Absolutely.
And we've been getting a lot more community input, we did have public workshops and opportunities to gain public input before we did the tactical East Avenue. And now we're looking to gain additional information now that it's actually in place.
Well, and that that's the whole purpose of tactical East Avenue is to to try some strategies in the field and get public input on. On whether they work, whether they're beneficial and whether people like them.
Right, and we had we had several other opportunities for the public to comment before that was installed.
Absolutely, we've we've probably had a dozen meetings on East Avenue over the years, public meetings.
We had the technical advisory committee as well, you had the public workshops, the schools, so it's been a lot of opportunities, but now. We've actually got it installed, and now this is another opportunity for the public. To have additional comments, and that's what the whole purpose of this is, right? Okay, great.
And Mr. Mayor, I would add that we've been receiving all that feedback, our staff is going to be out in the field over the next couple of weeks. Monitoring traffic operations and crosswalk operations and. Taking the feedback that we've heard and evaluating it out in the field, and then we're going to look to make some tweaks as needed. To try to respond to some of that feedback, this whole idea, this whole process of East Avenue was intended to be. A system that would allow you to get to a preferred alternative, and so we're going to do some adjustments based on the feedback and our observations and and then we'll move forward from there.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. Okay. Into some of the the nitpicking here, which is what I'm famous for, on page forty five of the of the budget. The public should notice that. Under reporting entity, the number one thing there is public safety. And that continues to be number one in our budget is public safety. And that's that's right actually here in the budget, because when you look at a budget, the budget is your numerical representation of your priorities. And the number one priority in Livermore continues to be per our budget, public safety, so I sincerely appreciate that as well. In on page thirty nine, the narrative stated that Livermore Police Department received a hundred six. Thousand emergency nine one one calls, but the table shows twenty three thousand, I'm just curious, what's the the difference in that? We have Chief Young.
Okay, if you can hear me, the. Hundred thousand or hundred and six thousand calls, nine one one calls were calls into our nine one one center, our dispatch center. Some of those. Well, some of the incidents require. Many calls, so we might have one police incident, but we would get ten or twelve calls on that one incident.
So if somebody sees an accident, you have multiple people call for the same accident, okay?
Yes, or they're medical calls that are transferred to medical officials and not police, so that's just our nine one one calls. As far as the calls for service, those are calls that somebody reported a police incident and we respond to. And then the police incidents number are a combination of the calls for service and all the officer initiated activity, they might do like traffic stops. Welfare checks that officers on view and they just call out on it and generate that call for themselves.
Okay, great, thank you, I didn't think about having multiple people call on the same accident, great, thank you. On page forty four, there's a graph, so we hit our solid waste diversion target early, so I thought that was great. Ms. Ellenson, terrific job, but then it sort of dropped off. So I'm wondering, is that, you know, during the pandemic, are people buying more stuff online and we're getting more waste that isn't necessarily getting recycled?
So it's a combination of things, if you notice, the line often follows when the economy is doing very well, people are consuming more. And therefore people are throwing more things away, but more recently, things like the. Events in China where they've stopped taking so many recyclable materials, some of that then has had to gone, go to trash.
Plastic becomes garbage instead of recyclable.
Right, and then, of course, there is. Right. And then, of course, there is the, what we call the Amazon effect where people are getting more and more and more deliveries and that goes out in their containers and often in their trash. So it's a variety of things.
All right, great. Thank you. But I was so excited when we hit our 75% and better than that beforehand, before our 2015. But we're starting to slip a little bit.
Well, we're still working on it and CalRecycle keeps changing the way they calculate it. So we'll get there.
We'll get there. Thank you so much. Page 176, the pie chart doesn't show the budget percentage for the fire department. So you could just correct that in the, in the final. And the same thing on page 180.
We'll make sure, yeah.
Yeah, on page 180, the pie chart doesn't show the budget for public works or use of dollars. So just as we finalize those.
Yeah, we'll fix that in the final budget book.
Page 270, 258, congratulations on the Budget Excellence Award. Well done. You know, I found this very readable. It was actually kind of fun going through this. A lot of really cool historic pieces of information in there that I found very interesting. One thing that's kind of fun is page 96, it shows the city council budget. And when you look at the 23-24 budget, for the entire city council, all of our budget considerations, there are mayors in the Bay Area that make more than our entire budget for this entire council. So I think that that just shows that our residents are getting a great bargain for what we do. Because the time commitment of this council is extraordinary. And I see, I see all of them. I see everybody on this council. They're out at public events. They're out at the community service days and the farmers markets. And they're out in the community. They're talking to folks. So I think that's remarkable. So it's a great bargain. But as I said, we're not up here for the money. We're up here because we're here to make the community a better place. Just to Tina's point, the insurance has increased over 200% in five years. I get comments online, emails and next door, people complaining about, well, the city budget went up, you know, 5% and the CPI only went up whatever. Well, okay, so our insurance costs increased 200%. There's a lot of factors that go into this. It's not, it's not that simple. But again, I think that this budget is a terrific document. Once again, the public safety continues to be the number one priority in our budget and it will continue to be. I sincerely appreciate all the great work that was put into this document. And does anybody have any other questions or comments, Vice Mayor Kick?
I have a couple of things that I have to say because things got a little bit confusing there for a second. A budget is a plan for how we spend money, not a tax document that is exactly what we will or won't spend. So I want to make that clear. I heard a couple of comments from my colleagues that I want to just give another perspective of. I heard a, I don't know how many of our people will be able to afford to live in the new space. Whoever moves there, they are our people. Whether they can afford a $5,000 apartment or the affordable Eden apartments, those are our people. I also heard we would not put all affordable housing in Springtown. I would love to do that because whether they can afford a $5,000 apartment or a $1,000 apartment, those are our people. So I want to really be careful with language. And a bargain on our council costs, I think is an equity issue that I hope we look at in future years. Most other councils, even if they don't get paid, they get health insurance that is paid for by city staff. So I think if you look at all of us, we're not a very diverse group. And it is difficult because a couple of us that do work full-time aren't at everything. Because you cannot survive on $12,000 a month, a year. You could survive on $12,000 a month, but not a year. So I think that, you know, while some people might see it as a great money-saving thing, I think others in our community might say, I wonder why there aren't anybody, there isn't anybody up there that looks like me or is my age or has children like me. So I think that's something that unfortunately we'll have to go to the voters someday. So just maybe something to think about for anybody who might be listening.
Well, to that point, the city council has not had a raise since 2007. Yeah, there's not a lot of folks out there that have not had, even in the viewing audience at home, that have not had a raise since 2007. So once again, this is not, we're not here for the money. But to Vice Mayor Kick's point, there are, there are times and there is expenses. And when you consider what inflation has done since 2007 and where we are today, that perhaps it would be a time, sometime to revisit that. And so we may well do that. Okay. So any other comments, questions? Again, remarkable document. Thank you so much. Very readable. I have had documents in the past where it was almost like the large cuneiform tablets working through those. But this was very readable and as I said, I had rather enjoyed it, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just add, you know, we spent quite a lot of time today thanking staff in different departments working on these documents. But one group that we really would like to emphasize is the city council. You're here setting policies for the community, establishing a vision and a mission for the community that are reflected in our strategic plan and the budget is based on that strategic plan. So we thank you for your leadership. We thank you for your love for this community. And we also thank you for supporting staff as we go out there to implement those policies and implement that vision. So thank you very much.
Well, once again, thank you. There being no further business before the council, I'm going to adjourn this meeting to our next regular meeting on May 22, 7 o'clock.